... May 23 of 2005. At this time, I'd like to ask our junior Girl Scout troop, number 258, to do our pledge of allegiance.
Color guard attention. Would the audience please rise? Color guard advance. Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of your country, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guards post the colors. Color guard salute. The audience may sit down.
Thank you very much, girls. Would you like to take a minute and introduce yourself? Let us know your name and perhaps the school that you go to?
My name is Lexi Friesen. I go to San Carlos Charter School.
My name is Lauren Kirkpatrick, and I go to San Carlos Charter School.
My name is Savannah Ray, and I go to San Carlos Charter.
My name is Sarah Shrek, and I go to San Carlos Charter School.
My name is Natalie DeVero, and I go to San Carlos Charter.
Well, thank you very much for coming and doing the pledge of allegiance for us today. Next item on our agenda this evening is any changes to the order of the agenda. My fellow council members, do you have any changes?
No.
Staff, is there any changes?
No, Madam Mayor.
And anyone from the public wishes to make any changes? Okay, we'll move right on to council reports. I've asked Jeff Maltby to give us an update on the sustaining the City of Good Living Strategic Planning Initiative. Jeff?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. To give you a brief update on sustaining the City of Good Living, we are working with MIG right now to finalize the agreement for professional services with them, the contract. But we're going ahead with the process and starting the planning. As you'll recall from the scope of work, the first element in the process will be to do a half-day city council retreat. MIG has proposed two dates for your consideration, so I'll ask you to take these two dates back and check your calendars, and if you can get back to me, that'd be great. And they are both Fridays, June the 17th and June the 24th. As you may recall, the primary purpose of the council retreat will be to pick the topic areas that will drive the remainder of the process. So once we get that accomplished, we can start planning the rest of the process, and we'll keep you posted.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I also wanted to take a minute and to thank my two fellow council members, Mike King and Matt Grocott, who graciously agreed to serve on the subcommittee to get it to this point. And I think it's really going to be a wonderful initiative, and the council is going to move it forward, I think, with the community quite successfully. So thank you very much. Second item, under 3B, is a report from our city attorney. And this is actually with respect to at our last meeting, we had two public comments related to potential ethics investigations. And I just wanted to report that Bob Lanzon and I, our city attorney, did meet following that meeting and discussed really the allegations and the requests for the investigation. And the result of it was that, for all of us, Bob has put out a memo clarifying the residency requirements. This in no way makes any judgment whatsoever on whether or not any council member was currently sort of not in town or not, but it's just really clarifying it for future. And then furthermore, I'll be sending out a memo to my fellow council members, just reminding them about, you know, the need to watch what you say, especially to the press, because I think what's happening more and more is things are getting, I wouldn't say misquoted, but perhaps not quoted within context. Bob, did you have anything to add?
Not really, unless there are any questions. I did want to point out that the issue of residency makes an interesting issue to research. Nowhere in the law does the word domicile appear, and yet the law talks about residence, it talks about inhabiting, it talks about everything but domicile, and yet that's what the law has been interpreted to be. And as you know from reading the memo, that domicile includes not only all these things as to where you live, but also your intent as to where you live. It's a very complicated issue. And again, if there are any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Other council reports. Don, do you want to start?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Matt chime in here, too. The City Council Building Department Ad hoc Committee, we're almost done, basically. We're in the process of summarizing. We will be sitting down at our next meeting with Liz Cullenin, who's our planning director. And some of the issues actually get into planning as opposed to building department sort of issues. So we're going to be formulating a plan of attack, if you will, on those sort of issues. And we will be recommending certain things that will come back to council for discussion at some point in time, potential ordinance change, and we'll just see how that evolves. But we're nearing the end of our process, I think. Is that fair, Matt?
Fair enough, yeah.
Okay. I think that's all for now. You done? Mike? Nothing? Tom?
Got a couple of things. Just wanted to mention that on May 11, I attended the Legislative Action Day in Sacramento. And we had a chance to meet with our legislators locally, Mullen, Ruskin, and Semidion. There's a lot of talk about redistricting, about pension reform, also about housing issues. We did have a chance to hear from the governor at lunch, and he committed to putting back the funds from Proposition 42 back into the state budget. That would return to us something like 200,000 or 300,000, Brian. Of course, that's the governor's pitch on this. The legislators who talked to us later suggested it may not be quite that much, and they may have some other ideas about how to use that money. So the budget battles continue. But it was an interesting day and good sessions. Secondly, I'd like to bring the public up to date on where we stand with a Citizens Advisory Group. We call this group the Citizens Advisory Committee for Evaluation of Athletic Fields, Use, Needs, and Possible Solutions. A little cumbersome, so we call it the Fields Committee. We've been meeting, 28 of us have been meeting since March. We've met six times, and we probably have another four to six meetings to go. But we have had an opportunity to talk about the imbalance of demand and supply in terms of our athletic fields and what we can do about it. We have considered the question of need. We have talked about our existing fields or potential fields that could be brought into play. We're working with the school representatives to consider whether there is land available on school sites that could be brought into city field use. And at the last meeting, we had an interesting presentation by an assistant athletic director at Stanford, who talked about their experience with natural turf, artificial turf, and lights. So it's a good session, and we'd encourage any of the public who would like to join us to please do. Our next meeting will be June 2, here in City Hall upstairs. And as I say, we should finish this up in another couple of months. Finally, I attended a CMAC meeting this afternoon and had some interesting information that was presented as a part of the updating of our transportation plan countywide. And I won't bore you with a lot of numbers, but I did think it was interesting that in the 2000 census, when they counted work trips in putting together the census, work trips from San Carlos to San Francisco totaled 3,270. And, I'm sorry, that's from San Carlos to Santa Clara, excuse me, 3,270, of which 90% drove alone in their cars and 1% took the train. From San Carlos to San Francisco, there were 1,415, or about half the number to Santa Clara. 75% drove alone and 15% took the train. So all that ties in with some of the congestion issues that we've talked about and our continued campaign to try to get people into transit and out of their automobiles. So it was an interesting session, and those figures will be coming back to us in different forms as we update the county transportation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Matt?
Nothing.
Nothing to report? Okay. I just have one thing, actually, and as many of you were aware, this last weekend was our Hometown Days here in San Carlos. It was our 25th anniversary of Hometown Days. And I was overwhelmed by the outpouring of support and the outpouring of participation. I did want to take a minute to thank all of the volunteers that really worked so hard to pull that together. We had music, we had entertainment, we had awards, we had a parade, we had just a lot of activities, a lot of fun for everyone. And I also want to thank the community for coming out in such numbers and supporting both our service organizations as well as all of the people receiving the awards or letting you know more about what they do within our community. So thank you very much to all of you that did come out and do that. I certainly appreciate that. And I also wanted to give a special thanks to staff as well, because certainly there was a lot of staff support for that Hometown Days as well. And I want to recognize those as well, all those people on behalf of the City Council. So thank you very much. All right. Next item this evening, under council appointments, is consideration of reappointment of Joanna Wassa to our Planning Commission. It's a three-year term, ending in May of 2008.
I move she be reappointed.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Christine.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Mayor Teagle Doherty?
Yes. Okay, moving right along. This evening, under presentations, we actually have two presentations. The first is award of our San Carlos Youth Advisory Council, the Community Scholarships. And the Youth Advisory Council here in San Carlos, which is comprised of our youth, provides a scholarship program to acknowledge young people who are committed to their community and to school service and who seek positive solutions to critical problems and issues facing young people. I think it's important to note that this scholarship is based on service and not necessarily on need. And that while it's not based on academic achievement, certainly the recipients need to maintain a 3.0 or better grade point average. This year, we actually do have, I believe it's four scholarships. And so I'll come down to the podium, and Jillian Holden will assist me in presenting these. Our first Youth Advisory Council Award for Outstanding Youth Scholarship for Community Service goes to Jennifer Chang. Do you want to tell us kind of a little bit about yourself and what you did to get the scholarship?
Okay. Put you on the spot. My name's Jane Chang, and I'm a senior at Carmont. And what did I do? I'm not quite sure what I did. Drama, right? Okay. I'm assistant director and stage manager in Carmont Theater. And I am involved in, like, Qantas and, yeah, Qantas.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. Our next award recipient this evening for community service is Madeline Case. Come on up. You're walking slow, so you're thinking about what you're going to talk about, right? Congratulations. Thank you very much. Do you want to?
Okay. I'm also a senior at Carmont, and I guess to get this award, I went to Honduras and did some community service there for six weeks last summer.
And our third award goes to Jennifer Baumhauer. Jennifer?
I'm Jenny, and I also go to Carmont. And I guess to get this award, I've been junior and senior class president, varsity cheerleader, member of Voices Community Service Group. Do you drama with Jenny? And yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I just want to mention that the money that's being given or awarded through these scholarships is actually raised through fundraisers that the Youth Advisory Council does do. So not only do they raise the money themselves, but then they decide how it gets awarded, and they choose the recipients. So, you know, congratulations and hats off to the recipients. And also, certainly, on behalf of the council, appreciate the work that the Youth Advisory Council does in the city. Do you want to say anything?
You said everything you wanted to say, so that's okay.
Next item on our agenda this evening is a presentation from the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, the Heart of San Mateo County. And joining us this evening is our Executive Director of Heart, Chris Moore.
Well, thank you, Mayor Teagle Doherty and honorable council members, for the time to give a report back on progress to date with the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, the Heart of San Mateo County. And I'm afraid I'm going to have to start out being kind of a downer after that feel-good moment. Because, first of all, the issue of housing is, of course, a pressing one for our county. Just last month, the Association of Realtors said that the median single-family home price is now $935,000. Condo prices, meanwhile, are over $500,000 in terms of the median. So more and more young families starting out are having a hard time. Fortunately, lenders have gotten a little more flexible, so there is some give in the marketplace. But nonetheless, the fabric of our communities is eroded when the next generation of families can't afford to live here. And meanwhile, the quality of our workforce is compromised when people can't afford to live and work anywhere near the same community. In fact, according to CICAG, the City and County Association of Governments, 40% of the workforce commutes into this county. We're also losing essential professionals, public safety workers, teachers, childcare workers, and other people who make our communities work. However, there is some light at the end of the tunnel. Heart envisions a community where housing is increasingly attainable for all, and I know San Carlos certainly supports that. And our mission is to raise money to meet critical housing needs in this county. And it's a regional approach to what is, in fact, a regional problem. So Heart was set up as a joint powers authority with the county and so far 12 of the cities. And a public-private board of directors was set up to govern the JPA. And there are 11 elected officials, including Mayor Teagle Doherty as San Carlos's representative, and 10 members of the private sector representing business, nonprofits, education, labor unions, and other organizations. So far, Heart has raised $5 million. Of that, $3 million has come from the county of San Mateo, and $2 million was achieved through a matching grant from the state of California. And we have made $4 million available to developers to put into very affordable rental housing developments in Heart member agencies. Right now, we have one full application in, we've got several other inquiries, so we are hoping to get that money out the door and into the community where it can do some work. Our goal is eventually to raise $10 million a year through a combination of public and private sources. And for every dollar that Heart raises, we expect to be able to leverage at least $10 from other sources, private, federal, state, county, and so on. So with that kind of leveraging, we might be able to assess 400 to 500 new units a year. Just a word about the staffing. It's actually provided on a contract basis. It was outsourced. The board of directors decided to pursue that. So the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County is actually my employer, it's a nonprofit, community-based organization, to provide general management and staffing. And in addition, the county of San Mateo's Department of Housing provides program management, because they already do a lot of loans, grants, and other such things with housing. So they were a natural choice for that. Currently, dues are paid on a per capita basis by the member agencies, about .31 cents per person this year. We do have a couple other cities that are, we hope, close to putting it on the agenda for them to join as well. And of course, as the population of the Joint Powers Authority grows, the per capita ratio goes down. So we look forward to working with you collaboratively to address these issues around housing. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And then putting on my other hat for a moment, we have an event coming up, June 7, just down the street at the Samtrans headquarters. Samtrans and the Housing Leadership Council are putting on what we're calling Grand Vision's Grand Boulevard, an evening lecture with Dan Ionescu, who's an architect from San Mateo who's done some visioning work that you may have heard of, and Ian McAvoy from the staff of Samtrans, talking about the Grand Boulevard Planning Initiative. So we're looking forward to creating a vision together in the community to help move some of these ideas forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Are there questions? Tom?
Just one question, Chris, and thanks for your update on Heart. I think we're all interested in the process. What do you really expect in terms of startup and when? The money's in the bank, I presume, so are we looking at sites or where are you in the build-out process?
Yes. So for the first $4 million, we have one active application for a site in Daly City, some senior housing. We have another site that's interested in East Palo Alto, and then some other nibbles around the edges that haven't made a formal application yet.
Good, thank you.
You should note that the funds are not gifted or granted, that they're actually loans, and they will come back. So it's a...
Oh, I see.
It's self-replenishing, exactly.
Although currently, for that current pot of money, the loans are pretty long-term.
Correct.
But they will.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. One other thing I'll just point out is there is a fundraising or fundraiser subcommittee as a portion of the Heart Board. And if any of my fellow council members are interested in helping to raise funds or know of organizations that may be interested in looking at funding affordable housing within San Mateo County, to please let myself know, or Chris Moore as well. Because we certainly do feel that this is not just a city or a county's issue, this is really, you know, we need to get local businesses and the private sector involved in providing housing within our community as well.
And if I may, actually, that reminds me, in July, the San Mateo County Association of Realtors is having their annual golf tourney, and the proceeds will benefit Heart. So we're grateful to them for their support.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. Our next item this evening is public comment. This is a period of time for people to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda. You will be limited to two minutes at this time, not to exceed 10 minutes total. If you have additional time that you would like to have, you can certainly address this at the public comment period at the end of the meeting. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the City Council on an item not on the posted agenda? Okay, seeing none. The next item this evening is approval of our consent calendar. The consent calendar items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Does any of my fellow council members want to remove any items? Okay. Anyone on staff?
No, Madam Mayor.
And anyone from the public wishes to have any item removed? Okay, I will entertain a motion for approval of our consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar items 7A through K.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Christine?
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Mayor Teagle Doherty?
Yes. Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing, and it's for consideration of approval of the Hillcrest Circle Park negative declaration and renovation plans. Joining us is Guy Wallace from our Parks and Parks Department.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Guy Wallace. I'm the park superintendent, filling in for Barry Weiss, who's not able to be here tonight. First, we'd like to say that this Hillcrest renovation project is a true partnership between the city and the members.
Just speak a little bit louder. I don't know why it's so hard to hear.
Okay. And the members of the neighborhood. We'd especially like to thank Wendy Walter and Laura Gottman, who went to the neighborhood and raised funds to add to the project. And we'd also like to thank the council for agreeing to match those funds. These funds allow swings in turf, sandplay areas, things that make the park more enjoyable. Also, you notice in the report that there are eucalyptus trees to be removed. This is largely due to the safety concern for the people using the park. With that, we'd like to thank the Tree Selection Committee, who met several times to pick up some replacement trees to make the park beautiful, and we thank you for their time and effort in this. With that, we would ask your consideration for the approval of this Hillcrest Circle Park negative declaration, so that we can move forward with a good design for a deserving neighborhood. And I'm available to questions.
So are there questions for Guy?
One question, Guy. In terms of the scope of the project, the first phase will be some $360,000, and then there's a second phase following that. Can you tell us what's in the second phase that's not included in the first phase?
There's some perimeter landscaping that is not available in the first phase. We are looking for funding outside as well, granting, to finish the project in that way.
So there's just not a whole lot that's left undone after this first phase is finished? More cosmetic improvements, perhaps?
That is correct. There's a bench, perhaps, and some garbage cans, but mostly the perimeter landscaping.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions? I just had one. You mentioned a community tree committee or a citizen tree committee? Is that right? It's a group of citizens that got together, neighbors from the park?
Correct.
And how many people were there?
There was, at the most, seven. We had several different meetings, people not able to make it, but they emailed and sent representatives or information with people who were making it.
Okay, thank you. That's wonderful. I just, I didn't realize there was a separate committee that was working just on the trees. So it's nice to include the community in that. Okay, this is a public hearing. Are there members of the audience here that wish to address the council on this item? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move to introduce Resolution 2005-dash...
Okay, hold on. 46?
46.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Christine, would you mind calling the questions?
Member King?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Mayor Teagle Doherty?
Yes. Okay. Under new business this evening is actually a consideration of studying the freestanding library book drops. And just as a bit of background, we had John Hoffman, who came before council with his petitions and signatures a couple of meetings ago. And Bob Lanzon and I got together to try to figure out how we could look at moving the notion of having a library drop box, moving that forward within San Carlos. And Bob has prepared a staff report. Bob, do you want to, do you have anything to add to the staff report?
Just to briefly call your attention to the... Just to briefly call your attention to the staff report, actually, of the library, the library staff, the JPA, which is attached to my memo, and the motion, or motions they had before the JPA, and to indicate that it was alternative one that the JPA board passed on, which was just this week of May 2nd was the, when they acted on it. Effectively, it brings the matter, it keeps the matter alive, first of all. If they had voted for alternative two, then as far as the libraries were concerned, you know, they weren't going to get into the drop, Dropbox business. Instead, they said for the staff to work with the cities, and the cities to work with the staff. Again, I want to emphasize that it's the library's ultimate call, because it's the library's staff that would have to operate and man these drop boxes. Even though it's the city's cost to acquire one, the city's cost to put it in and maintain, it's still going to be, as I see it, although a negotiation, a library issue. And tonight, we did ask Vicky Johnson, the county's head librarian, to come and address you briefly about the issue. Vicky, if you would...
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Teagle Doherty and councilmembers. I'm Vicky Johnson, Director of Library Services for San Mateo County Library. And as you heard from Mr. Lanzon, there were two recommendations or two alternatives presented to the governing board of the JPA. The library staff supported recommendation number two for operational issues, but the governing board felt that this, when a city is interested in providing a different kind of service for their community, that that should be the option of the city to explore that with the library. So they did further specify in the motion that, where we had recommended that should a drop box, or a book drop be installed, that the entire cost should be assumed by the city. Since that's an additional service, we already provide book drops, and we felt that we shouldn't be required to pay for that redundancy. It was put in the motion, however, that should a city determine they want to have book drops, freestanding book drops, that either the city could pay the additional staffing cost as well as all the other costs, or we could negotiate for a reduction in other services to the city. I have lots of information on book drops, but I know you've heard about this and talked about this and thought about this a lot. So I don't want to belabor the issue, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there questions? Tom?
I do have an operating question, Vicky, and thanks for being here. So I understand what happens during the day. People go out from time to time and take the books out of the box and bring it back into the library. What happens on a weekend or holiday, when we might have three days where no one's around? What happens then? Do we bring someone in to do this, or close off the drop, or what?
Well, there are different options. The drops come with locks that many libraries use on holidays and weekends. And at that time, they typically use their in-library drop if they have one, at least at the library. I recently worked out that's what we did. We had a holiday drop, materials dropped into a public area of the library. So we didn't leave that open all the time, only on holidays. But still, depending on how long the holiday period is, staff typically has to come in and empty the drops inside the building. So presumably, we would have to do that as well, unless we locked the drops and only took care of the internal returns.
And do you have a feel for the number of people who, on a typical day, would come in and drop books? Are there any numbers that would give us a feel for the amount of traffic that we could be experiencing here?
Well, I don't think the traffic would change. It would simply move to a different location.
Right.
Because currently, our in, our external drop into the library is used, I think, only by about 2% of the users, but it's used at off-hours. And that drop would continue, I mean, I suppose the returns would be now split between the two drops across from each other, or around the block from each other, or whatever.
So the vast majority park come into the library, drop their books, get more books, check them out, and make a complete trip?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mayor.
Mike?
In the report, you commented about the RFID, the radio frequency identification. Are these remote sites equipped with such technology?
No, actually, and none of our libraries are currently equipped with that. This is a future plan. The first library to come up with radio frequency identification tags will be the new San Mateo City Library. The technology works in such a way that when you, when an item is returned through a book drop into the building, the technology reads the RFID tag and can sort the books automatically, even to the point of putting them onto book trucks in rough numerical order to be re-shelved. The book drops are really just big metal boxes with a big cart inside, and they would not have that kind of technology. So theoretically, staff members would have to empty the book drop and then go put them through another book drop in order to have them checked in that way, which kind of works against the point of instituting that kind of technology.
And then the second question was, in your report, operationally, they empty it three times a day? Is that the standard procedure?
Well, that's a minimum. There are libraries, such as the one where I worked just recently, which had three large outside book drops that were emptied every hour.
Obviously, get more than 2% of the users utilizing that box.
Right, because that library is far from the building, and that was the only way to return materials outside of taking them into the library and putting them on a conveyor belt. Most people felt, in that case, this was a better option, a book drop.
Okay. Are there other questions?
I do.
Okay, Matt?
I just had a few questions. I think one of them you answered without me asking it, but it seems that the current walk-up book drop would stay in place whether or not there was a, or if a, I guess a better way to put it, if a drive-through were to be installed, then the walk-up would also stay in place?
I have kind of two answers, if I may. Yes, it's my intention that it would stay in place, because I think that serves our future needs better. And I believe, in designing the building, the community thought about how books should be returned, and that was their best decision. So it seems to me, you know, I can't recreate that thought process, but it seems to me that that was a good decision, since the books go right back into the workroom. The other part is, though, you mentioned drive-by book drop, and that's really questionable. The vast majority of freestanding book drops are on the passenger side, or they're placed on a flat surface that's not by either side of a car. The only one in San Mateo County on the driver's side is at the Redwood City Main Library, and they also have a walk-up book drop nearby.
Okay.
So I think you really can only do a driver's side drop, I believe, if you have a one-way street. So you can put it on the driver's side, such as Pacific Grove's book drop, or like the one in Redwood City. Or if you have a very long expanse where you don't have pedestrians crossing the lane of traffic that the books would be returned in.
Okay, I think we might have that, but I'm not sure. You mentioned the 2% getting dropped, the books are dropped in the walk-up.
Mm-hmm.
2%, what numbers are we talking about?
Well, that was based on a very short-term observation. So I'd really want to go back and double-check with staff over a longer period of time what the percentage of returns are there. Because I know when I've come to observe the drop, I've seen quite a number of people pull up and drop things off. Usually, I come by before the library's open.
What is the, I guess, put it in a different way then, just not in terms of, not the 2%, but just in terms of circulation. What's the circulation as far as books coming in and going out of, mostly coming in, I guess, to San Carlos?
Well, hopefully, the same number come back that go out.
Yeah. Well, you can take them to other places, though, right?
Well, I can tell you, the library system as a whole, last year circulated over 2.6 million items. San Carlos is our second highest circulating library. But I'm not sure I can tell you the number off the top of my head, and I'm sorry, I should have thought to write that down. I can certainly send it to you, though.
Okay.
Matt, perhaps if I can, one of the recommendations is to appoint a, add, add hot subcommittee to look at this. And I would imagine that those, that type of data would be something that the subcommittee would have access to and would be considering in their recommendation back to the full council.
Okay. One last question. Belmont's got a library under construction. What are they doing?
Same thing San Carlos did, because it was such a good idea. They're going to have the materials returned from outside the building into the workroom. That's also what we did at the recent, recently-built Milbrae Library.
Okay.
And actually, in addition, at the Milbrae and Belmont libraries, and the one we're planning in Portola Valley, we will not have any materials returned inside the library. So at Milbrae, all items must be returned from the outside right into the workroom.
Okay, thank you.
One last question, Don.
And is Foster City, and is Foster City the same?
Foster City has drops from the outside, but I believe they also have a drop inside the library.
But there's no drive-bys?
No, we don't have those at any of our libraries. We do have a book drop right outside the door at East Palo Alto, but it's inside the building.
Okay, there's no more questions. I do have speaker slips from two individuals this evening. First, Virginia Martin, if you could just...
Could I speak after Mr. Hoffman?
Does it matter? I mean, if that's your preference, I guess so. Okay, John Hoffman, please state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
My name is John Hoffman. I live at 909 Crestview Drive here in San Carlos. Maybe I feel a rebuttal coming up, I'm not sure. I look at the library, the system, as a service organization. And I think service organizations that progress and are successful pay attention to what their customers, or in this case, their patrons, say they would like. Without question, nobody questions the fact that asked whether they would like such a service as a drive-by drop-off box. People overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, say yes. I recognize that it is easier for library staff not to walk out the door and empty a box and wheel a bucket of books into the, into the library and run them through a scanner. But it seems to me to be a relatively small effort in the total operation of the library. And that is confirmed by the five libraries that have these drive-by drop-off boxes in our county, all five of which are city-owned. None of the county-run libraries have such boxes, but I think it's high time we did. 2%, I think, is a, quite a low figure. I'd be surprised, after some study, if it wasn't a higher percentage than that for the people that actually come and return to the side of the building. But I anticipate that it would still be a relatively low figure compared to the 25 to 33% of people who return materials through the drive-by drop-off boxes at those libraries who have them. So we're talking possibly up to 15 times as many people using the system. If it's inconvenient, people tend not to use it as much. And it is inconvenient to pull up or wait in line and then pull up, go out, put it in the side of the building, then get back in your car, start your car, put on your seatbelt, go, versus driving by, popping it in, and moving on, much, much quicker the second way. There was a mention of a one-way road. The parking lot's a one-way road, in effect. People don't circulate two ways. There simply is not enough room as you enter in order to do that sort of thing.
John, your time's just about up.
Okay. I would suggest that studying the issue objectively is exactly the right thing for the council to authorize. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's a question.
Should we go through the speakers first and then come back?
If you want to do it.
Okay. Virginia Martin, followed by Margaret Pye.
I'm Virginia Martin. I live at 840 Berkeley Avenue in Menlo Park, and I'll be friends with the San Carlos Library president next year. I've been on the internet all day today getting emails back and forth from different friends, and nobody is, nobody is keen on another Dropbox. As you know, we spend a lot of time at the library sorting books and equipping the bookstore, and we've never heard a complaint about the existing Dropbox. My concern is, if a new Dropbox were installed, would we lose parking spaces? And I think that's really an issue. Because if you go to the library at, say, 9 o'clock, 9:15 on a Thursday or Tuesday, you have to park on the street quite a ways away. We have a Dropbox in Menlo Park that is really quite entertaining. It's on one of these one-way streets, located in the parking lot of the library. And I don't know if it's people that just are unaware, or whether they really try to buck the system. But what they do is, and this, as Vicky mentioned, this Dropbox is on the, on driver's side. So what people do is, they go the opposite direction to put the books in. So they put it in with their left hand, then. Joe Blow comes from this direction, and you have two cars nose to nose, and it's quite entertaining. We are very opposed to this, and we would like you to deny this. Thank you very much.
Just a quick, you would, are you in favor of a study, or not even in favor of a council subcommittee looking at this issue?
I think it's not, I don't think it deserves a study.
Okay.
I think there's no complaints.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Margaret Pye, and again, if you could state your name and city of residence for the record, that would be wonderful.
I'm Margaret Pye. I live in San Carlos. As you can tell from my getup and my accoutrements, I am not a driver. So this thing wouldn't help me in the least. I think the Dropbox, or the drop slot outside the building, is perfectly adequate. And my understanding is that if we put a Dropbox in the parking lot, it would be a matter of feet away from the other Dropbox. And in this day and age, I think encouraging people to drive their cars more and more is exactly the wrong way for this city to be going. I mean, I think it would be ridiculous to encourage people to drive. We were talking earlier, Tom Davids mentioned, and the mayor mentioned what a wonderful thing the weekend was with the hometown days. Well, what if we decided to encourage cars to drive to hometown days also? We could pave over Burton Park, and we could have people just pull up and sit in their cars and listen to the music and everything. I don't think we need more people driving. Another thing is that the library has been designed poorly, so that the driveway on the street that the library is located on, Elm Street, is not a driveway that accommodates pedestrians at all. And anything that's going to have more cars going up and down that driveway, when in fact pedestrians have to use that driveway, is also wrong. So I don't think it needs a study. I just think we need to forget the whole thing.
Thank you very much, Margaret. And then finally, I have Clint Miller. Or is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this item? Okay. If you change your mind, there's speaker slips by the front door.
I think the sound system now works.
Sorry, name and city of residence.
Clint Miller, 2429 San Carlos Avenue. The former, the city that I formerly lived in had a Dropbox, and it was very convenient. They had the building slot, and then later installed this Dropbox. It was somewhat sophisticated, and it had a conveyor belt that took the books into the building. I know that was quite expensive. However, let me suggest something that I haven't heard. I've heard the concern about congestion in the parking lot in front of the library, and losing spaces, et cetera. I think, I remember reading something in the paper about, one of the criticisms was that what do we do on rainy days? You know, what happens to the books on rainy days? Why didn't you consider putting it in the basement? Why didn't you consider putting it in the basement, which, there's plenty of parking down there? It would keep it out of the weather. There's an elevator that would bring the books up to wherever it needs to be. But I think basically what the message I'd like to get across is that I think it deserves study, and I think you should look at the entire site and see what can be determined.
Thank you, Clint. Is there anyone else here that, okay, I'm seeing one other. Come on up to the podium, please, and state your name and city of residence, please, for the record.
My name is Patricia Berg, and I'm with the city, I live in San Carlos. I come to the library in the evening a lot because I work during the day, and I just want to say, it's oftentimes very hard to find a place to park, and anything that would make that harder, it's not safe to be on the streets at night. That's my only point, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here? Okay, discussion, comments? What we have before us is whether or not there's interest in putting together an ad hoc subcommittee, perhaps not necessarily of city council members, but an ad hoc subcommittee that would work with the library, work with Virginia, right? Vicky, I'm sorry, from the library and staff to sort of start to pull some of these numbers together. I will, I do want to note that Mike Garvey and, I believe, staff has authorized a traffic study already to take a look at the potential traffic impacts that a drop box may, in fact, cause, so...
Madam Mayor?
Certainly.
At the risk of sounding unpolitic and rather blunt, I just think this is a dumb idea. The library's been operating for five years or more. It was designed with its purpose in mind, and it's been operating very well. Vicky mentioned it's the second-most active library in the system. People are finding their way in to bring back books, and we know that when they bring back a book, they're in the library and they're encouraged to bring something back out. This is a two-way street. It's not like the post office. You don't have to go to the post office before you mail the letter. You got the letter, you want a place to drop it off. It's a library, you'd have to have the book before you can bring it back, and so you've got to go in the library to get the book. It's a two-way process, and it's one that is going to require two ways in terms of people used in the library. Until John did his petition, you know, everyone felt it worked just fine, and I respect his petition, I respect all those who signed for it, but it's like offering a kid the candy, you know? You want a piece of candy? Sure, I'll take a piece of candy, but it's not needed. It's nothing that the library needs, it's nothing that the public needs, and speaking as a weekly walker, we can all use a little more exercise. Park a little distance away, get out of your car, stretch your legs. It just isn't necessary to go through this process of putting up something that's not needed, and to exercise and generate all the concern about whether we're going to lose parking, whether we need parking. All those issues are going to come into play, but I just don't think it's a necessary process.
Thanks, Tom.
Do you think a study, you don't think a study would come to the same conclusion?
I just think we ought to move on.
Don, you're sitting there thinking about something.
Pardon my voice. Who knows how this microphone's going to work? It's been reel-on and reel-off here tonight. I think there are some interesting arguments that Mr. Hoffman puts forward about why something like this should be in place. I think those arguments can also be countered in a lot of interesting ways. I am, having served on the library board, having chaired the design committee for this library and co-chaired with Mr. King, you know, the bond issue to help build this library, I mean, I've been around the libraries for a long time, but it seems to me that it's not really broke, so I'm not inclined to try to fix it. And Tom used a good analogy there. The other thing I'm concerned about, and I got a lot more acquainted with this on the county library board, and that is that I understand that libraries have to function, and the function of a library is labor-intensive oftentimes, and to whatever extent that can be minimized, in whatever aspect that can be minimized, that's something that should be looked at also. If we have, and it's on a consistent basis, in-building library drop-offs, and if they are, and would be set up to record books as they come in electronically, as, and I can see this in the very, you know, the fairly near future, where every piece of material that goes out of a library, you can have a little chip in it. I mean, the technology's already here to do that. Technologically, that's yet an extra step, and we're only increasing the labor intensity, whereas we ought to be trying to minimize that. Bottom line is, while there are some interesting arguments, I tend to agree with Tom.
Thanks. Sorry, thank you, Don. Matt, do you have any comments?
Well, I'm going to, I guess, disagree with my other two council members. I think it at least deserves a study. I'm not convinced one way or the other about necessarily the validity of it, except to say that whenever you can provide convenience to folks, I think that's a good thing. I think, I understand what Margaret's saying, and certainly there's people who get around on their bicycles, or walk, or whatever. There's another side to that argument, though, that if you go to the library to turn in a book, and that's the only thing you're there for, and that does happen, I suppose, I certainly have done that before, now you're forced to shut your car off, go inside, deposit the book, or on the outside of the building, deposit it, and then come back to your car and restart it, and do all that maneuvering. That actually, in terms of resources, you know, the engine, anytime you start a car and restart it, you're burning up more fuel than you are if you just leave it idle for a little bit. And the thing that, I guess, the reason I would like to see this go through, two reasons. One is, John did do a survey, and it really hasn't, even at the library JPA, didn't get addressed very much, and certainly the library staff didn't provide anything contrary to that survey. And the survey showed, you know, I think, what was it, 99.9% of the people who were asked said, yeah, we'd like to have that convenience. So, for that reason, and also, I guess I'm curious about this idea that Mr. Miller brought up of having, and somebody actually emailed me when they knew this was coming up, and suggested the same thing, that probably the best place for it is not necessarily at ground level, or at the outside level, but down in the garage, down below, and I think that's at least worth looking into.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Mike?
I'm not as versus Tom on the library system, although my mother was a librarian and taught us the Dewey Decimal System, and I still file our books in the Dewey Decimal System, but one thing I did find out, if it's a dumb idea, the study also that it's a dumb idea. And what we're talking about here is not what we think about it, but I think it's worth a look. Whether we think it's a dumb idea or not, I think all its staff is recommending, and we're saying is, let's take a look at it. If it's a dumb idea, it'll come back as a dumb idea.
Okay, thanks. I guess I'm going to weigh in last but not least on this. I tend to agree with my fellow council members, David and Eaton, but for all of the same reasons that they cited, but also for the additional reason of, you know, we're constantly looking at fewer and fewer sources of revenue and funding alternatives. And, you know, if, I go back to the, if it's not broke, why fix it? If the study comes back and says, yes, lots of people would like to have a drop box, it's going to cost more money, which means that we're going to end up having to cut services. And, you know, I just, I don't see, I don't think that the people who would say, yes, it's a good idea, I mean, if someone offered me at Hollywood Video or Blockbuster the convenience of a drop-in box, like at the post office, I'd say, yeah, absolutely. Keep me from having to get out of my car? Sure, because, you know, when you're dropping off books, and, you know, I don't turn my engine off, I just sort of park there on the curb and run in, drop it into the side of the building, and get back in. I think that would be, that would be something that would be nice to have, but if they told me that I'd be paying more for that movie rental, or that I would have some other cost in terms of either reduced hours, or not as many materials, or things like that, I would really disagree and say, no, you know, I don't mind jumping out of my car, it's not that big of a deal. So, as much as I really appreciate the work that John's done on this, I think there are times that, you know, a study or a subcommittee would be warranted, and there are other times where, you know, the study may come back and say that, yes, there is overwhelming support if it were free, but unfortunately, it's not, in my mind, not free. So, with that, I guess I will entertain a motion, one way or the other here. Bob, is there a motion?
No.
Or is it just, it just dies for a lack of emotion?
It sounds as if there's no, I did.
We have new microphones this evening, so...
I hesitated. I think we can count heads also, and there's no direction to staff to proceed with it. We'll just take it, take that advice, and we won't go any further with it.
Thank you. And then finally, this evening, we do have another public comment period. Again, this time is for speakers that wish to address the council on items not on the posted agenda this evening, and you will be limited to approximately two minutes. If you'd like to address the council, please come to the podium and state your name and city of residence.
My name is John Kessler. I am resident of San Carlos, been so for about eight years. I am here, I'm actually, I own a business here in San Mateo County, employ about 500 people, and so I missed my agenda item, which was to thank you all for your support of Hillcrest Circle Park. Whatever y'all are doing here in the city council, keep doing it. This is, I've lived here for about eight years, along with my wife. We've quite literally had three children in this town, and that all of our children were born at home, and we enjoy it very much, so keep it up. And I guess I just wanted to offer a little information, and if it was offered before, stop me. I don't want to keep anyone from dinner. First of all, I want to thank the staff of the city who helped in the fundraising effort. Vicky Galea did an outstanding job, you better keep her, watch what you're paying her, because someone's going to hire that woman, she just...
She pay you to say that?
No, I've never met her, but my wife, who knows these kind of things, who hired about 200 of the 500 people I've got, said, keep that woman. Oh, thank you. Second, of course, Barry Weiss, who is an incredibly imaginative guy, and seems, I've spoken to him a couple times, seems like a great guy, and then also Guy, who's here, as well as other members of the staff. And then Wendy Walter, one of our neighbors in the neighborhood, who just kind of worked her butt off on this thing to get us and others interested in it. I just wanted this to be understood, for the success that it is, we received almost 200 donations from members of the community. Tom David's donated, thank you, unsolicited, I might add. And most of those donations, we asked for $1,000 from people living directly adjacent to Hillcrest Circle Park, and $250 from those of us who live a little farther away. And, boy, people really came through. Donations ranged from $20 to $5,000. I don't know who that $5,000 was, but I'm going to get my kids introduced to them. And in any event, I just thought the community did a great job, and we very, very, very much appreciate your support of this project. What I love about San Carlos is it just, there's just a ton of spirit, and it's just not one of these places where you drive into the garage and lock the doors, and all, of course, my garage won't fit the car, but...
Okay, I'm sorry, your time's running out, but thank you very much. We certainly appreciate hearing that, so we're looking forward to a nice, pretty park up there. And then I have a speaker request from Andre Carpio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Board of City Councilmen. My name is Andre Carpio. I am the owner and the manufacturer of the SolarCar CARP. I come here to... I'll do without it. I come here to express continuation of my grievances, and one of them in which I want to address the city council, that I've written extensively, thousands of word letters addressed to every council member in different departments here. I never had the courtesy of an answer. I found it offensive. It's a grave matter, and since I cannot get, I don't want to say cooperation, but efficient handling of my case through the police department, I have exhausted, I believe, all administrative remedy to recover my SolarCar. And so, now, I only have one alternative, either bring my case to the public, and more certainly, bring the grand jury to investigate the action of the police department. So, I'm giving you a fair warning. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there's no other speakers for public comment, council is going to adjourn to a closed session. We have two items of closed session that we need to discuss, public employee employment for a new city manager, and public employee performance evaluation for the city manager.
Madam Mayor, we would ask that that session be held in the administrative conference room on the second floor due to interference, or a lot of activity in the city hall and other rooms.
Okay, thank you very much.